No. Okay, Christine, take it away.
All right. Thanks so much, Michael, and thank you, everyone, for taking the time to be with us this evening. As Michael mentioned, my name is Christine Svetkovich, and I'm DEQ's Northwest Region Administrator. I understand that there are many people very interested in this proposed facility, and we understand how important the proposed project is to all of you that have joined us this night, tonight, and we truly appreciate you being here. This evening, we are conducting a formal public hearing on the draft 401 Water Quality Certification, which is a necessary step that Next Renewables must complete as part of their required U.S. Army Corps of Engineers 404 authorization process. Public hearings are a way for state agencies to invite input from those interested in a public meeting format. DEQ hosts public hearings to share information, answer questions, and collect verbal comments on specific draft permits and certifications. My colleagues here with me this evening are Haley Teach, who's our 401 Coordinator, Melissa Graeber, who's our North Coast Regional Solutions Coordinator. Melissa has been very involved in all aspects of this proposed project and how DEQ will regulate the facility from early on. Teresa Burkew, who's one of our Water Quality Managers, Tiffany Yelton Bram, who's also one of our Water Quality Managers and is acting as our Hearings Officer this evening, and then Michael Locke, whom you just met. Next slide, please. We are in the public comment period for the draft 401 certification and will be recording your verbal comments for the record tonight. DEQ is also accepting written comments until 5:00 PM on Friday, October 25th. All comments are evaluated equally, whether you speak this evening or submit comments in writing. Tonight's agenda includes an overview of the facility and draft 401 Water Quality Certification. There will be time to answer clarifying questions about the draft certification before we get into the official public comment part of the meeting. Our ability to conduct an effective public hearing tonight depends on everyone's cooperation and commitment to engage respectfully. Please be courteous to everyone here tonight and to each other, and allow one another an opportunity to ask questions and provide comments. We recognize how much time it takes to learn about and follow these important issues, and I truly thank you for your involvement. I do want to emphasize that your comments, perspectives, and questions are very important to us as we continue our work. With that, I'm going to turn it to Haley Teach to talk about the draft 401 Water Quality Certification.
Good evening. My name is Haley Teach, and I am the Program Coordinator for DEQ's Water Quality Certification Program. Next slide, please. I'm going to be discussing this evening what a 401 Water Quality Certification is, why Next Renewable Fuels is applying for a 401 Water Quality Certification, and what the 401 Water Quality Certification regulates and evaluates for a proposed project. Next slide. Next slide. There we go. Thank you. Next Renewable Fuels Project proposes to construct a renewable diesel fuel manufacturing facility at the Port of Columbia's Port Westward Industrial Park in Clatskinie. The proposed facility will receive and process a variety of organic waste materials to produce fuel products that work like their petroleum-based equivalents. Next expects to have a production capacity of up to 1.58 million gallons of fuel per day when the facility is running at full capacity. Next slide, please. The proposed site is located in Columbia County and wetlands and waters. The Columbia River is located outside of the levees and bounds of the Beaver Drainage District to the northwest. The Clatskinie River is located west and southwest of the site. The proposed site was drained in the early 1900s primarily with surface ditches, which coincided with drainage for agriculture for a large portion of the historic Port Westward area. The date construction in the area has site surface waters cut off from the Columbia River, and hydrology is now influenced primarily by direct precipitation and management of the drainage districts, ditches, excuse me. The slide you see here shows the proposed facility location and the proposed plan with the facility site, a main access road, a secondary access road, pipelines to the terminally partnering facilities, and a rail spur moving from east to west. Next slide, please. The site has six wetlands and eight waters mapped on site. Wetland 1 is labeled as yellow on the left-hand side of the slide, and Wetland 2, labeled in the color green, are the two wetlands proposed for impact as part of this project. The eight waters, Waters A through F, are also proposed for impact. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers finalized the federally jurisdictional determination for the onsite wetlands and waters this past April. The waterways on the project site drain through McLean Slough and the Beaver Slough to the Beaver Drainage District Pump Station near the Clatskinie River, which then flows to the Columbia River. Next slide, please. A Water Quality Certification is required for any federally licensed or permitted activities that may result in a discharge to navigable waters. DEQ is the certifying authority in Oregon to review applications for a 401 Water Quality Certification. The jurisdictional waters impacted at this proposed project site are wetlands and waters, wetlands 1 and 2, which I mentioned on the last slide, and waters A through F. Next Renewable Fuels is seeking a federal 404 permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for this project due to the proposed removal and fill activities within the wetlands and waters. Part of the requirement for receiving that 404 authorization from the Army Corps of Engineers is to obtain a 401 Water Quality Certification from DEQ. DEQ's role for the 401 Water Quality Certification is to evaluate the discharge to these wetlands and waters for water quality compliance with the Clean Water Act and state water quality standards. Per EPA's final 401 rule, DEQ's 401 decision options include issuance of a certification, issuance of a denial, or presumption of waiver. DEQ does not waive authority on 401 certification requests. The 401 Water Quality Certification is based on the information submitted to DEQ now and the current proposed project plan. DEQ has the authority to modify or revoke a 401 certification if the scope of the project changes or other authorizations, for example, land use decisions, are reevaluated. Next slide, please. Three main components of the 401 Water Quality Evaluation are water quality standards, beneficial uses, and anti-degradation. Proposed aquatic impacts related to the removal and fill activities must not impair established water quality standards or beneficial uses of the receiving water bodies. In addition, DEQ's anti-degradation policy prevents unnecessary further degradation of surface water quality. Some examples of areas that DEQ does not have jurisdiction over for this project for the 401 Water Quality Review are the rail car routes, the numbers and types of products that can be transported by rail, vessel use changes, and land use. Next slide, please. I'm going to talk briefly about the 401, oh, sorry. I'm going to talk briefly about water quality impairments. McLean Slough is upstream of the Clatskinie River, which is listed on the Section 303D list of impaired water bodies for dissolved oxygen. The term 303D is the state's list of impaired and threatened waters. States are required to submit their list of impaired waters to EPA for approval every two years. For each water on the list, the state identifies the pollutant causing the impairment when known. Dissolved oxygen refers to the concentration of oxygen gas incorporated in water in water bodies that are water quality limited for dissolved oxygen. The activity must result in a reduction of no more than 0.10 milligrams per liter for a single source. No fill activities in the Columbia River are proposed for this project, but the Columbia River between Mill Slough and Wallace Creek is listed on the Section 303D list of impaired waters for polychlorinated biphenols, PCBs, and DDE 3, sorry, DDE 44. PCBs belong to a broad family of human-made organic chemicals known as chlorinated hydrocarbons. PCBs domestically manufactured from 1929 to 1979 when they were banned. Although no longer commercially produced in the United States, PCBs may be present in products and materials produced before the 1979 ban. DDE is a breakdown of DDT, which is used in the past as an insecticide. Section 303D also requires that the states establish a total maximum daily load, also known as a TMDL, for any water body designated as water quality limited. The TMDL is a calculation that identifies the amount of pollutants from point sources and non-point sources that a water body can receive and still meet specific water quality standards. The Columbia River between Mill Creek and Wallace Slough also has an EPA-approved TMDL developed for temperature, dioxide, and total dissolved gas. Dioxide of 2378 TCDD can be inadvertently produced in very small amounts as an impurity during the incineration of municipal and industrial wastes, typically from pulp and paper mills and during the manufacturing of certain chemicals. Most of the exposure the general population receives from this dioxide is from food, mainly meat, dairy products, and fish. Next slide, please. Water quality standards are established to protect beneficial uses of state waters. Impaired beneficial uses for the Clatskinie River and the Columbia River are domestic water supply, fishing, and fish and aquatic life. The proposed project area is not used for fishing or recreation. Federally listed species do not occur within the waters in the project area. There are listed salmonids present within the lower Columbia River adjacent to the area. However, there is no free or open connection to the fish-bearing waterway because the existing levee system does not allow fish from the Columbia River to enter the waterways. Additional beneficial uses of these waterways include industrial water supply, irrigation, livestock watering, fish and wildlife, boating and water contact recreation, aesthetic quality, and commercial navigation and transportation. Next slide, please. The purpose of the anti-degradation policy with DEQ is to guide decisions that affect water quality to prevent unnecessary further degradation from new or increased point and non-point sources of pollution and to protect, maintain, and enhance existing surface water quality to ensure full protection of all existing beneficial uses. Next slide. The 401 review evaluates post-construction stormwater management for any project that adds or reconstructs any impervious surface. This proposed facility will include a new impervious surface for the main plant as well as the roads and additional infrastructure. DEQ's 401 stormwater treatment guidance requires stormwater facilities to treat stormwater runoff at a rate of 50% of the two-year 24-hour storm event. Stormwater from the access road, rail spur, and rail spur access road will be routed to treatment swales to provide stormwater water quality treatment, detention, and conveyance of runoff. Treated stormwater will discharge to McLean Slough from two points. Outlets in the stormwater facilities will be equipped with downturned elbow traps to trap floatables, including oil sheens. The proposed facility will discharge commingled wastewater and stormwater to the Columbia River via the Port of Columbia River Wastewater Treatment Facility, which has an existing NPDS permit that complies with the current TMDL. The remaining areas of the facility generating stormwater will be covered under the NPDS 1200Z Industrial Stormwater General Permit, which regulates how the facility manages its stormwater while operating. Next slide. Like I said earlier, the site is historically a bottomland depression wetland with an annual connection to the Columbia River. The proposed project is proposing to impact 104.3 acres of wetland on site. They must mitigate for those wetland and water impacts for a net loss. Offsite mitigation is proposed within the same watershed at the facility to compensate for the onsite wetland and water impacts. The mitigation site has been previously used as a poplar tree plantation. The compensatory mitigation site will be constructed concurrently with the construction of the proposed fuels facility. The existing ditches located around the perimeter of the mitigation site will remain in place to avoid raising groundwater elevations adjacent to the mitigation site. DEQ is not the lead regulatory agency for mitigation approval. Mitigation has been approved by the Oregon Department of State Lands through the state removal fill permit. Next slide, please. This slide shows the review history of the 401 certification for this project. DEQ issued a denial without prejudice decision to the applicant in both September of 2021 and September of 2022 due to incomplete application information. A denial without prejudice is an administrative denial that allows an applicant to resubmit for a 401 Water Quality Certification. Next submitted to DEQ for a new 401 certification review in January of 2024. Per EPA's 401 rule, DEQ is granted a full year by the Army Corps of Engineers to issue a 401 decision. DEQ's deadline for a 401 decision on this proposed project is in January of 2025. Next slide. This slide shows the information of our public engagement history related to the 401 Water Quality Certification Review. The 401 review for this project has been involved in several public engagement opportunities since 2021. DEQ posted the draft 401 Water Quality Certification decision for public notice on September 5th, 2024 because DEQ determined we had been provided the information we needed by the applicant for the 401 Water Quality Evaluation. Per Oregon Administrative Rules, the 401 public notice period of a draft decision is 35 days. However, DEQ has preemptively extended the opportunity for comment to 50 days and scheduled a public hearing, which you are attending now. Next slide, please. This slide shows some additional contacts by topic not directly related to the 401 Water Quality Certification. So if you have questions related to the mitigation plan, the alternative analysis or draft environmental impact statement, land use decisions, air quality, or spill response, please contact these inform me, please contact these representatives listed on the slide. And if you need further time to write down these contacts, we can also put them in the chat, I think, Michael. Next slide, please.
Yeah. Yeah, of course. And yeah, we can start throwing some of these contacts in the chat, and I just want to remind everybody that we will have these slides uploaded to our webpage that was linked in the chat as well. So we're going to be doing that very soon after this meeting concludes.
So the next steps after this public hearing are the public comment period for the draft 401 Water Quality Certification is out on public notice until October 25th at 5:00 PM. Please send comments through only one mean, either in writing, via email, or your DEQ online, or tonight verbally through our public hearing process. DEQ evaluates all written and verbal comments equally. DEQ is evaluating water quality-related public comments, not the quantity of comments received. In response to comments DEQ receives, we may modify the draft 401 Water Quality Certification once reviewing comments and the public comment period closes on October 25th. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Haley, for that presentation. We now have time for questions and answers, and I would like to just remind everybody that you can type your question in the Q and A box, and we'll read it aloud, or you can use the raised hand feature, and I'll let you know when you're off mute and you can ask your question. If you're on the phone, remember to press star nine to raise your hand. When it's your turn, you will be prompted to unmute yourself, which you can do so by pressing star six. And want to remind you as well that this is not the official public comment period. This is not the hearing part of this meeting tonight. So please hold your comments for that public hearing portion, which will follow the questions and answers. We anticipate that many people here are going to want to comment. So we're going to pause questions at 7:00 PM and begin accepting public comments to ensure that we get through comments in a timely manner. Since we have limited time, we're going to be focusing on questions related to the draft 401 Water Quality Certification. If you have questions that are not related to this draft certification, we have an FAQ and additional information and resources on that Next Renewables webpage that we've mentioned a few times, and that's also in the chat. We can also connect you to folks who can directly answer your questions. If you put your question in the Q and A box and it wasn't answered, we will respond to your question in writing, and we're going to upload it to that Next Renewables project webpage. If you have your hand raised and a question isn't answered because we run out of time, please write your question in the Q and A box, and we're going to respond to it in writing as well. We want to make sure that we get to your questions. So with that said, I'm going to begin our questions and answers. So we've, I'm going to call on the first person with their hand raised. And before I do that, I'll just let you know that we're going to be kind of bouncing back and forth between raised hands for people to speak their question aloud, as well as reading questions from the Q and A box. The first person on my list, I have Dan. You are now able to unmute yourself and ask your question.
Thank you. Is DEQ aware of the conclusions of the biological assessment, which found that the project would negatively impact essential fish habitat? And has DEQ come to an agreement with the local drainage district about whether this project is feasible? Thank you.
Do you mind specifying what biological assessment?
Yeah, it's the biological assessment from March 30, 2023, and it includes an attachment to stormwater plan that DEQ proposes to rely on for this permit, and it concludes that in bolded letters, it will adversely affect essential fish habitat. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Haley, is that something you'd like to take?
Sure. I can answer that. So DEQ has received and reviewed the biological assessment that was dated of March of 2023. Your second question related to the drainage district is that we are reviewing the application with the proposed point discharge impacts to the project site and the applicant.
Okay. Thanks, Haley. Go ahead, and I'll read the first question that I saw in the Q and A here. And this might be a segue from the previous question where Laura asks if there are known risks to water quality and fish habitat. Why is DEQ moving forward with this action before the final environmental impact statement is complete? Haley, do you mind taking that one?
Yes. DEQ is reviewing the current application as it was submitted to us in January of 2024, and we believe that we have received all the application information that we need to assess the water quality impacts to this project related to our standards and water quality impairments.
Thanks, Haley. I'm going to move to the next raised hand on my list here.
Michael, can I, sorry, can I also add something to that?
Go ahead. Absolutely.
Also, just want to clarify that the Army Corps of Engineers is the lead agency under NEPA, which is the National Environmental Protection Act, and they are the lead regulatory agency preparing the environmental impact statement and the lead agency part of the environmental impact statement process.
Thanks, Haley. Okay, so I'm going to go to our next raised hand here. So I believe we've got Mayor Bob. You are welcome to unmute yourself and ask your question.
Well, excuse me. I do not have a question. I did not know my hand was raised. My apologies.
Oh, no worries at all. Okay, there is, finding my next hand. Okay. So our next hand raised is a caller. So the caller, whose last four digits, 1252, you're able to unmute yourself and speak.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Correct.
Hi. This is Sandra Moylan from Quincy, about three, four miles from the proposal. Anyway, my question, I didn't catch everybody's name because I just have a phone. I don't have a screen. But there was a discussion of various water samples of 2, 3, 4, 5G or something. I didn't catch all that, but dioxins. I'm very concerned about the dioxins. We have pulp mills up and down river. So who takes these samples and what years, when are they assessed? Also, water samples, who is taking current samples in Bradbury Slough and in Wallace Slough, up and down river of the existing plant, which has supposedly met all the regulations? But we have clam and fish dioxins on Baker Beach, a mile from Port Westward, that fish and wildlife is not letting the public know about. So who is testing, how often, when, and how do I get hold of them?
Thank you for your question. Okay. Christine, would you like to take this?
Sure. Thank you so much for that question. I'll start out by saying all of the pollutants that Haley was referencing in her presentation related to Oregon's 303D list or list of impaired waters, all of those samples are either taken by DEQ or other federal agencies, and in some cases, some organizations that DEQ has relationships with as it relates to ensuring that everybody that takes samples that we analyze and use for our decision-making processes use the same methods to do so. So the samples that are taken to determine the quality of the water in general are taken by many different entities, though DEQ is the primary one. And DEQ is the one who takes the information and analyzes all of it. I can't reference, or I don't have any information regarding the specific slough that you referenced, but if we can take that question down and see if we can get some more information to provide you an answer.
Thanks, Christine. And just as a reminder for our caller, this meeting is recorded, so we'll make sure to get back to this question and answer that in writing. Thank you very much. Okay, and I'm going to go to our next question that was written as kind of a multi-part question. So the first part is asking how essentially, how could DEQ be reasonably assured that the project complies with the Clean Water Act if the local drainage district has already identified or mentioned that they've identified some flaws? As well as, and we might have to like take this in a couple of bites here. So there's that, and actually, I'm going to let Haley kind of answer that first part of the question.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, I could, I'd appreciate some clarification of what the specifically glaring flaws you're referring to. So the four oh one water quality certification process, we're looking at the discharge of fill to the wetlands and waters on site. So those are wetlands one and two and waters A through F. The project is mitigating for those wetland impacts and water impacts offsite. We are looking at the three oh three D list of impairments, which I discussed in my presentation. There is no direct connection, the McLean slew is not listed as an impaired water body. So we are looking at sections of the Clean Water Act for discharge to the point source solution, which is the fill of the wetlands and waters on site. And we are referencing sections three oh one, three oh two, three oh three, three oh six, and three oh seven of the Clean Water Act. And also our Oregon administrative rules of which are three hundred and forty dash forty one, that goes through all the different parameters and standards regarding dioxin, dissolved oxygen, temperature, et cetera. I'm happy to try to answer question in more detail if I could get some clarifications or expressively what you're, you were referencing.
Thanks, Haley, and I'll read more to this question. And I'm not sure if this might go into it. So in twenty twenty one, the same person that asked this question, they say in twenty twenty one EPA expressed concerns that next quote unquote, has not provided sufficient information for the Corps to make a reasonable and defensible judgment that the proposed activities comply with the Clean Water Act. Why is DQ concluding that this proposal is reasonable now? When EPA had some feedback back a few years ago. And in addition, I might, I'm just going to kind of add some more to this. And Haley, you might, let me know if you need me to read some parts of this again. The questioner asks, why do we rely on information from applicants? And I think that's kind of more of this, let's clarify what our review process is when it comes to these applications. And they mentioned about waiting for the draft E I S or environmental impact statement, which I believe that you talked about before. So I'll just leave it to those two. And there's going to be a couple more parts to this question.
Okay, so the, the reference that EPA is concerned is from public comments in twenty twenty one, when the Army Corps of Engineers public noticed the the federal application for a four oh four permit for the Army Corps of Engineers. Again, this draft four oh one water quality certification is based on the current proposed application, which was submitted to DQ in January of twenty twenty four. DQ did issue a denial without prejudice in September of twenty twenty one due to incomplete application material. So we are not basing our current four oh one decision or the draft four oh one decision that's out on public notice is based on the current application we have received and not on the application received in twenty twenty one. And that public comment was in relation to the Army Corps of Engineers public comment period for the application. The question about the E I S, I think I've already answered how DQ at this time has received all the required information materials we believe we need to evaluate the water quality standards for this proposed project. In addition to a lot of the information that is included in the environmental impact statement has been provided to DQ as well. And I have talked through with the Army Corps of Engineers of all the information that is typically included and could be expected to be included in this draft E I S. I was there, I'm sorry, I'm getting going back to the questions. There was a question about why are we relying solely on the applicant's information? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the four oh one water quality certification process, this is not for just this project, but it's for all four oh one applications that we receive from DQ is to evaluate and review the project being submitted to us by the applicant who is proposing to impact wetlands and waters for their project. So we are reviewing the application materials received for a four oh one water quality certification, making sure that we have a valid request for a four oh one water quality certification, that they are meeting water quality standards and conditions of the four oh one water quality certification for the proposed project. So not just for this project, but for all four oh one water quality certification reviews. We are receiving application materials from the applicant. We're reviewing the application materials from the applicant. We will and sometimes do request additional information if needed. And then we consult with other regulatory agencies that have permitting involvement in those projects as well. And then we also, a lot of our projects also have a public comment opportunity like this where we you know, look to the community to provide their comments on a draft decision document. Were there more parts to that question, Michael, or did I cover it?
Yeah, there was. So this question basically asks, does that, they claim that there's a mischaracterization? Or I probably say maybe there is between the number and contents of tanks in the public notice and how feedstocks will primarily arrive by barge. So basically, I think it's asking for clarification on the number and contents of tanks that are in the public notice as well as how the feedstocks will primarily arrive to the facility. Yeah, there's that. And then another part of the final part of the question I'll ask Christine to answer.
Okay, yes, the draft four oh one decision currently out does say twenty two feedstocks. It is twenty one feedstocks and that will be corrected. That's part of the public comment period and part of this, it's a draft document. So part of that public comment period is making any corrections like that. So it is twenty one feedstocks, not twenty two. The the material for feedstocks will be arriving to the site and then also leaving the site. There will be vessel transportation and rail transportation. So I'm just double checking the question that I mean barges and ocean going vessels will be a primary use of transportation for the fuel product and also receiving feedstock as well as there will be rail car use for the project as well.
Thanks, Haley. And then I'm just going to ask Christine to hit the last part of this question before I'm going to move on to a raised hand here. And I just want to note for everybody with timing, I'd want to try to get this to move on to our public comments pretty soon here. So apologize if we don't get your question, but we will respond to it in writing if we do not. Christine, do you mind maybe jumping in here to talk about the seismic readiness of dykes in the area? As well as let's go with the next question in the chat that was about sampling water in the Bradbury Slough.
So as it relates to the seismic, the questions regarding seismic stability for the dykes, DQ does not have regulatory authority regarding the seismic readiness of, of dykes. That's not within the authority that we have to make decisions on.
Thanks, Christine. And do you be able to, do you be able to also answer the question about would DQ sample water into the Bradbury Slough?
That's a good question. I, I think that's one we'll have to answer in writing because I, we would need to collectively look at where the, where that is on a map related to all the discharge points that I don't have that in front of me. I don't know if you do, Haley, I see you have your mic off.
Oh, I don't have in front of me the discharge points of Bradbury Slough that would be potentially covered under the N P D S permit with the port. So Bradbury Slough for everyone, it's on the first map, Michael, of my presentation, if you want to go back, but Bradbury Slough is on the northeast side of the proposed facility. But we need to go back and double check the exact points of discharge.
Okay, great. Thank you, we will answer that question in writing. Okay, and I'm going to go to have another raised hand here. There's a caller with your last four digits is six, one, six, seven. You are now able to mute yourself, so please ask your question. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Helena and I am looking right now on my computer at the submittal, submittal info from January thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And it looks like the submitter at this point doesn't even know if the project site is within a hundred year floodplain. The answer to that was unknown. And I'm just concerned, I don't see the opportunity to look at the post-construction stormwater management plan on this submittal info, maybe it's partial, I don't know. That's a question. But, but I'm just wondering if you're relying on the submitter's information that they're giving you and they don't even know if it's in within a hundred year floodplain. Like, how is their management system going to work, especially with climate change? When we know that hundred year floods are happening more and more often? Thank you.
I can answer that. So we do check if a project is located within a floodplain. We, that is something, part of our review that we do confirm and check on. Floodplain permits are a local jurisdiction process. So the four oh one water quality certification review does not directly review or approve floodplain permits for projects being proposed within a floodplain.
But doesn't that affect water quality if there's a spill?
The that's a, that's like a two-part question because of the, the whole Port Westward area is below the elevation of the Columbia River due to the Dykes and Levy Systems within the, the area. So I don't have regulatory authority over the floodplain permit development and approval. What I'm looking at is the water quality impacts to the discharges being proposed on site.
Thanks, Haley. Okay. All right, so let's see. I'm going to, another question from the chat. We'll take a couple more. This question is asking, why does the public notice refer to the twenty twenty one application?
I can answer that. So it's standard protocol for the four oh one water quality certification to list the federal the valid and current federal application. So the U S Army Corps of Engineers has had a valid and active application for the four oh four permit authorization since twenty twenty one. The, and the signature of the applicant for this federal application was signed in twenty twenty one.
Thanks, Haley. Okay, now I wanted to call on Mike Sealy. You're able to unmute yourself if you would like to ask a question.
Yeah, I got to look back through and see where the question is. And I'm not real good at this. Maybe you can read the question off for me if you don't mind.
Okay, so I think you asked how much have we engaged with the drainage district? And you mentioned by, and I remember you've asked this question about statute before, but has statute by overall any projects in that, in that drainage district? You mentioned this was reinforced via a lawsuit in Oregon state courts.
With Norma Drainage District one, two, three, which is the P D X Drainage District. And they won hands down at, at the Supreme Court. So where are we at with that? Are you engaging the drainage district? To, I have not saw any approvals and I am a drainage district landowner, so I have standing.
Sure, thank you. Okay.
I, I can, I can jump in here. Thanks, Mike, for asking that question. We're happy to follow up with you offline. We've, I know that
No, you need to follow up online right now.
Well, thank you for that, Mike. We are just about done with our time for a Q and A and we need to move to the public hearing. So we will be following up with you as it relates to that question. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you all for your questions. And any questions that we did not answer, we're going to go ahead and put that in writing. So if you had your hand raised and it was not answered, please type that into the Q and A. Mike, we have, I saw that you wrote your question in the chat here. So we're taking that down as well. But we want to move on to the public hearing portion because we have a lot of participants here tonight and wanted to kind of get through all of your comments in a timely manner so that, that folks can have time to provide their input. So please know that there we go, that this is different from the Q and A portion. DQ responds to comments in writing after the public comment period closes. So if you're joining us tonight online via the Zoom desktop or smartphone app, we should have your email address and we'll send you DQ's written responses to comments when that is completed. We will also send DQ's responses to comments to people who provide a written comment. I am now going to turn it over to our hearings officer Tiffany Yelton Bram to begin the official public hearing.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tiffany Yelton Bram, Water Quality Source Control Manager for Oregon Department of Environmental Qualities Northwest Region. Tonight, I will be in the role of hearings officer. Each person will have two minutes to provide their comment on the draft four oh one certification. We'll put up a slide and let you know when you have one minute left, fifteen seconds left, and when you need to wrap up. Please raise your hand if you'd like to make an official comment. Remember to press star nine if you're on the phone. And when you're prompted to unmute yourself, press star six to unmute and begin speaking. I'll be calling names in the order they show up on my list. We've got a lot of folks tonight, so even if you put your hand up immediately, you might be placed in line. When I call your name, Mike will unmute you and you'll be able to provide your comment. So now we're going to start the hearing. All right, we will now start the formal hearing and Tiffany Yelton Bram. It is recording, correct, Michael?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm your hearings officer tonight. It is, today is October eighth, twenty twenty four. The time is now seven oh seven P M. The time is now seven oh seven PM. I'm starting the public hearing to receive verbal comments on the draft 401 Water Quality Certification for Next Renewable Fuels, Oregon. As a reminder, written and verbal comments carry the same weight. You will have two minutes to submit your verbal comment. If you have additional written comments, please send them online via your DEQ online or email or by mail. You can find that information on the public notice at, sorry, I'll sit a little closer, at ordq.org backslash next-renewables. And that link is also in the chat. Now I'll ask everyone else to raise their hands to provide comment. Doing so will put you on my list and I will call on you. All right, I now invite Dan Serris to make a formal comment. Please unmute yourself, state and spell your name, first and last for the record, and provide your comment. The next two people on my list are Kathy Engel and Megan Evenson. Please go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. My name's Dan Serris, and I'm the advocacy director for Columbia Riverkeeper. My name's spelled D A N space S E R R E S. Next plans to build a truly massive refinery complex at a rail yard involving over one million barrels of fuel and feedstock storage in an area that is absolutely unsuitable, including a hydrogen plant on a place with unstable soil, all in the midst of crops, flood risks, wetlands, the Columbia River estuary, and tenuous dikes. Inexplicably, DEQ has concluded that, quote, "Based on information provided by the applicant, DEQ is reasonably assured that implementation of the project will be consistent with the Federal Clean Water Act." Here tonight to say that we support the concerns raised by the community at Port Westward who objected to this project. And DEQ has made a major unacceptable mistake. DEQ cannot be reasonably assured that implementation of the project will protect Oregon's water quality and all of the beneficial uses that rely on it. All of the resources sustained by the Columbia River estuary, when information submitted by NEXT itself shows the opposite. First of all, there are major flaws identified by the local community that call into question whether people can safely remain in the area during construction and operation of the facility. Industrial facilities placed in flood-prone areas cause toxic chemicals to mix with groundwater and surface water, degrading water quality and harming fish habitat, and fish, and farms, and farmers. DEQ, by approving this, would introduce this risk on a massive scale into the heart of the Columbia River estuary, threatening to poison water and productive farm ground. Many questions arise quickly, and you've seen many of them already pop up tonight. The fun, most fundamental question being, why is DEQ rushing to approve something with so many major gaps and flaws? And I'll just give an example. Why would DEQ propose that NEXT build a liner to control groundwater intrusion in stormwater facilities? This is in DEQ's permit. When NEXT's own stormwater plan states that this is not advisable, and it wasn't included in the land use permit. It's also unacceptable to see DEQ not answer the point-blank question from Mike Sealy. What is the status of conversation with the drainage district that actually manages the water? The drainage ditches themselves will impact the facility. The facility will impact the drainage ditches. DEQ has acknowledged that all of this is a wetland. The water will be intermingled. And we're watching. Thank you. Thank you for your, your attention. And I, I just have to close by saying this is wrong. DEQ should withdraw the public notice and deny the project.
Thank you. I need to move on to the next person. Next speaker is Kathy Engel, followed by Megan Evenson, and a phone number ending in six one six seven. Kathy, please go ahead. Kathy, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Tiffany. I've lived in Columbia County. Our, our families lived here for multi-generations, and I've served our community in many ways. Sixteen years on the city council and six on the local school board. So it's, it's through this lens that I evaluate the NEXT renewable diesel proposal and believe it is a wanted and necessary project for Columbia County. I urge the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality to approve NEXT Water Quality Certification Permit. As a school board member, I attended numerous public hearings, open houses, and one-on-one briefings to learn about the NEXT proposal. And I trust our state and federal agencies to weigh this sighting. I would like to underline the financial game changer that citing the NEXT project at Port Westward would be for our local school district. We're a small rural district that's been forced to reduce what we can offer our students. The current Oregon school funding formula benefits the higher populated schools versus our rural schools like ours. This $2 billion investment from NEXT Renewable Fuels will allow our district to be funded solely from local taxes and no longer dependent on the state formula. The NEXT project has been through years of public scrutiny, and it is time it finally moves forward. I strongly urge you to approve the DEQ water permit without delay. And thank you for considering my comments and also for being one of the watchdogs for the future of this beautiful state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, we're going to go with Megan Evenson, and then after that, I'm going to have Mike Sealy, I'm going to put Mike Sealy in the queue there, since he let us know he needed to go. May I please have Megan Evenson start?
Hi, my name is Megan Evenson, M E G A N E V E N S O N. I have been a resident of Columbia County for twenty years, and I have served our community as a Claskanai School District member from 2011 to present. Most of that time, I have served as the chair. My comments have been unanimously supported by the Claskanai School Board. As a board, we, we are strong supporters of the NEXT Renewable Fuels Project and request the DEQ approve the NEXT water permit. NEXT has designed a world-class clean fuels facility that protects our local water and creates a wetland mitigation site that is beneficial to the local environment, as well as to our school district through funding and partnerships for new educational curriculums. I've attended, along with fellow board members, numerous public hearings to learn about the NEXT Renewable Diesel Project. We find the entire design meets the Oregon's strict environmental laws and adheres to all regulations set forth to meet the Federal Clean Water Act. Further, NEXT has received approval for an Oregon Department of State lands removal fill permit, which includes the enhanced restoration of a 476-acre wetland within the Beaver Drainage District. This mitigation site will further enhance the overall groundwater quality within the region and contribute to naturally occurring flood mitigation and groundwater filtration. Our board has two questions we would like DEQ to consider. What aspects of the project prevent incidental spills from reaching neighboring properties in the Columbia River? Can NEXT treat stormwater and process water appropriately so that any discharge water entering the Port of Columbia County system meets strict federal and state clean water regulations? Beyond the water permit, our board would like to underscore the financial benefit the citing of NEXT Renewable Fuels at Port Westward would be to our local school district. This project has been through years of public evaluation. It is time the NEXT project finally moves forward. The Claskanai School Board urges you to approve the Water Quality Certification Permit without delay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm now going to call on Mike Sealy. Mike, see if you're able to unmute.
Yeah, I sure am. Thank you, Haley. I really appreciate it. You've done a great job of, of managing this whole thing, and I really appreciate it. We're a multi-generational mint farm and value-added, a high-value agricultural brand known here in the US. We're distributed across the US and back into Canada here real soon. COVID kind of wiped us out a little bit. And, and I'm a former commissioner of the Drainage District that manages the water that DEQ would allow Houston-based NEXT to pollute. And we are concerned that DEQ is rushing this process for making a decision regarding a major new refinery in our yard in the midst of a farming community that could not survive in the midst of such an impact. And I farm on both, uh, within Beaver Drainage District, I farm both on the high end, above them, and I farm below them. And so it has major impacts to me with how to convey water, which you have not addressed, and to irrigate, and also how to get water out for my upstream side. And this has major implications for us and would probably shut us down. And there has been no real hydrology report that details what needs to be done. When you're talking about clean, the drainage districts and stuff like that, you haven't talked about the impacts of that because those need to be done. We've been raising crops on drainage districts since eighteen sixty-one. If you go to Wilsonville, one mile east or west of the Toronto dealership is where we first started our first drainage district. My family's been, and our experience in drainage districts our whole lives. And you are not addressing anything, including with the, the chair of the Drainage District about how to deal with this. And I'll put it in more writing later. But you're, you're woefully not understanding how a drainage district operates and what needs to happen. So and I'm happy to educate you on that, or have Warren Sealy or the rest of the Drainage District talk to you. There, to my knowledge, there's been no discussion about that at all. And I think that's really upsetting. So.
Thank you for your comments. I need to move on to the next person.
Okay, yeah, take care and have a great day.
Thank you so much. All right, so the next speaker is the phone number with the N six one six seven. That will be followed by Representative Cyrus Javady and then Jordan. So please say, for everybody, please say your name and your, spell it for the record, or see, yes, say your name for the record, please, when you start speaking. Now I'm going to ask the caller to speak.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Helena Birckey. B I R C K is my last name. I recently moved from Tillamook County to Portland, and I am originally from the San Francisco Bay Area, which I say because it affects how I feel about this. I completely stand with the community and the farmers who are opposed to this project and see it as a ticking time bomb. You think fifty thousand barrels of oil per day in and probably fifty thousand barrels of renewable diesel, which is chemically identical to regular diesel, out in the sensitive wetlands, productive farmland area. It really is just waiting for us still. And as I said, I'm from the San Francisco Bay Area. And recently, there has been a switch from regular diesel to renewable diesel in two refineries there, the Phillips sixty-six refinery and the Martinez Marathon Refinery. And they have already had a spill in less than a year of work of doing the renewable diesel into the San Francisco Bay. I wouldn't want that here in the Columbia River next to farmland that is producing food. Oregon is supposed to protect farmland and protect the waters, maybe even beyond what the Point Source EPA requirements are. I'd also like to say that I don't actually know if this affects water quality. But with renewable diesel, there is significantly more flaring when it's being produced because it takes more hydrogen and burns at higher heat as they are doing the HESA refining process for, for renewable diesel. And that both has fire risks, which actually already happened at the Marathon Martinez refinery as well, and severely injured a worker, and potentially water quality if you're having a lot of spewing of methane gas or other chemicals into the air that does dissolve into the water. So I stand with the farmers and the community of Port Westward, and I urge you to look closely at what the actual likelihood of things are rather than just what the company is telling you because they want the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Cyrus Javady, followed by Jordan, followed by number one two five two.
Thank you. This is Representative Cyrus Javady. I represent House District Thirty-two here in Oregon. I'm here to voice my strong support for issuing the water permit to NEXT Renewables for their facility. This project represents a significant step forward for our community, offering a range of tangible benefits. First and foremost, the facility will create hundreds of good-paying jobs during its construction phase, and will offer long-term employment opportunities once operational. These jobs are essential for sustaining our local economy, especially in a region like ours that has seen industries come and go. NEXT Renewables is not just bringing jobs, they're also investing in the future of Claskanai, as we've heard from some other commentators tonight. In addition to the economic benefits, though, the facility is going to provide environmental advantages. By producing renewable fuels, NEXT is contributing to the transition to cleaner energy sources, something we all recognize is critical for the future. The company has also shown a commitment to working within the state's environmental regulations. And I'm confident that the permit process will ensure that our water resources are protected. The approval of this water permit is not just about compliance. It's about supporting innovation and ensuring that Oregon remains a leader in both economic development and environmental stewardship. I strongly urge the Oregon DEQ to approve this permit and enable the project to move forward. It's time we bring these benefits to our community while safeguarding our environment for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm calling Jordan. Please say your name for the record.
My name is Jordan Gutierrez, and I'm the Democratic nominee for House District Thirty-one. I support NEXT's Port Westward project, which will create thousands of needed well-paying jobs in Columbia County, injecting our local economy with a much-needed industrial base. And this is a great opportunity to bring the clean energy sector to our county. For far too long, industry and jobs in Columbia County have been declining, costing families well-paying jobs and destroying middle-class lifestyles in this community. The opposition to this new refinery is creating yet another barrier to job creation and economic gains for folks who live and work here. It also seems like the opposition isn't based on the merits of the permit, but rather extreme nimbyism rhetoric designed to deter industry in our county, no matter if it meets the regulatory standards or not. This has to stop. The construction of this new clean-fueled refinery in Columbia County will deliver meaningful and direct economic benefits for the people while also promoting cleaner solutions. Renewable fuels are a logical transition away from our petroleum-based economy of the present to our clean energy future. In addition to adding well-paying union jobs, NEXT will build a project that can be a clean-energy pioneer for our region, clean fuels, hydrogen, increased maritime deliveries. I support the NEXT Clean Fuels Facility because the people are tired of abusive anti-energy policy that sets us back in meeting clean fuel demands, lowering, bankrupting high fuel prices, and generating tax revenue that will provide needed funding for our schools, roads, and vital services our community needs. The people love this, the unions love the project, and the economy will love it. So I strongly urge DEQ to approve this permit and for the opposition to consider a clean future beyond what's currently in front of them.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is phone number five, uh, two one five two, followed by LA, followed by Senator Betsy Johnson. The phone, uh, person on the phone, could please tell us your name and record?
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I didn't realize I had to double unmute. My name is Sandra Moylanen, S A N D R A M O I L A N E N. As I said before, I'm As I said before, I'm from Klatskina area. I grew up here. I'm seventy-five years old. I have been to three years of public hearings. I have testified in person, in writing. And I keep feeling like all you agencies, DEQ, everyone is looking at virtual reality on a flat screen. I don't see people out here, boots on the ground, looking at the dead fish and the dead clams in on Maeger Beach in Bradbury Slough. When I ask questions like, who is testing the water? When was it tested? I get a no answer answer. DEQ has been ignoring all the testimony of Beaver Drainage residents whose very farms and lives would be impacted adversely. They have ignored the drainage operators such as Mike Sealy and the others who actually had to manage these thousands of acres of wetlands. And I I challenge any of you supporting this. I read the two hundred and some page uh plan. I read about millions of tons of toxic waste going into our air and water. I bet none of you read that. And you think it's gonna have no impact? If DEQ has been rubber stamping, you guys get what's going on here? I've testified against projects like this with open eyes for forty years. I started in California and ever since, virtual reality started happening in the eighties. And all you guys sit on your computers. You don't look at the big picture. You have your little piece of the puzzle. Oh, my piece looks yummy. Oh, this piece looks good. But you don't come down here on the river. You don't look at the dead and dying fish. I am walking on my family beach with human excrement wrapped in blue and green plastic and dead fish and dead clams. I call Fish and Wildlife is also one of your representatives. I don't hear any Fish and Wildlife people there. I just met with them in person. And they wanted to do deny the death of our river.
Thank you. Free comment. We have to have to interrupt you because we need to move on to the next person. Thank you. All right, Elaine Kelly, please, followed by Senator Betsy Johnson.
You hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, my name is Elaine Kelly. I live in Warren in Columbia County, and I'm also on the board of the Oregon Conservancy Foundation. And I wanted to speak to some bigger issues. The Port Industrial Park is the kind of park where no one wants to have a picnic. Now there's a push to make it even more industrial than a park with the addition of a rail yard. Rail yards are heavy polluters of air and water. And biofuels are being served to us as a necessary alternative to fossil fuels. But the carbon-free part is only in the burning of them, not in the making of them. In fact, the next refinery will ultimately emit a million tons of carbon pollution each year. The next website looks like an environmentalist dream, carbon-free transportation. But then farmers are kicked off the land. Pollinators and wildlife disappear under the huge, ugly, polluting industrial infrastructure. They paved paradise and put up a parking lot. This is not carbon-free. It's not free at all, but an economy that comes at a great cost. You don't know what you've got till it's gone. And the problem is global and biblical. Power, we love power, one of the great temptations in the desert. Power for every material pleasure, every freedom and convenience. It's a deep spiritual problem that includes a desire for jobs, no matter how badly those jobs pollute. There's another park, um, the Trojan Park in Rainier that's been billed as a delightful day-use park. Not mentioning at all that you recreated your own risk in the shadows spent nuclear fuel stored nearby in containers sitting there these past fifty years, just waiting for the overdue Cascadia Subduction Zone eight-to-nine magnitude earthquake to split them open. The trend to demand and provide more and more power has its consequences. We should stand up and face this temptation and learn the lessons of the desert.
Thank you. All right, Senator Betsy Johnson, followed by Theodore Sangus. Senator Johnson, are you able to unmute?
May I start again?
Yes, you may.
For the record, my name is Betsy Johnson, former Senator, District Sixteen. I'm testifying tonight for current State Senator Suzanne Weber. We are testifying tonight to express our strong support for Next Renewable Fuels. We urge DEQ to approve their four oh one water quality certification. The NEXT proposal is designed to adhere to Oregon's strict clean water regulations. The facility will produce renewable diesel and sustainable aviation fuels to replace petroleum-based fuels. These new fuels are up to eighty-five percent cleaner than current fuels. The proposed project site is more than a mile away from the Columbia River. The facility is designed to capture, process, and discharge water according to DEQ standards. The local water discharge system is a- has ample capacity. NEXT has demonstrated that processed water entering the local system will meet state regulations. Stormwater runoff at the site will comply with DEQ standards and will be subject to ongoing DEQ oversight. NEXT is proposing the enhanced restoration of more than four hundred and seventy acres of wetlands within the Beaver Drainage District. This wetland restoration will allow for better groundwater filtration, act as flood mitigation during storm events, and benefit native plants, pollinators, and wildlife. Increasing the use of renewable fuels will also lead to a decrease in particulate matter that lands on our snowpaks and impacts our rivers. As DEQ pursues aggressive strategies to protect water resources, clean fuels play a major role in reaching climate targets. As legislators, we champion projects that benefit Oregonians and our skilled trades workers. NEXT is committed to building its facility using union labor. NEXT will prioritize local hiring. This project is an opportunity for local graduates to enter into the trade apprenticeships. NEXT will create permanent positions that our local workforce is qualified to fill. NEXT has earned the support of city, county, state-elected officials, port commissioners, the Oregon Building Trades, Northwest Regional Council of Carpenters, the Oregon AFVL CIO, environmental leaders, Columbia County business owners, environmental justice organizations, business advocacy groups, and thousands of Oregonians around the state. We urge DEQ to approve the NEXT Water Quality Certification without delay. Thank you, Betsy Johnson, current State Senator Suzanne Weber.
Thank you. Theodore Sangus, uh, followed by Audrey Leonard and Oregon PSR. Theodore.
Good afternoon, get a good evening. I'm Dr. Theodore Sangus. I'm an environmental health scientist and a member of Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility. I'm speaking today to urge DEQ to withdraw the draft section four oh one water quality cer- certification for NEXT Renewable Fuels because of several concerns. NEXT proposal would harm fish habitat while polluting water that is vital to the local and regional communities. NEXT acknowledges this harm in its own biological assessment. Routine pollution at the facility would harm water quality, and establishment of the project would disrupt local water systems for the community. The proposed refinery project would violate the Clean Water Act's water quality standards and anti-degradation rules. But DEQ has not given due consideration to concerns voiced by the community that relies on clean water for their crops and livelihoods. This is a community knowledgeable about water floods and drainage systems and the serious and unaddressed threats to water quality that would come with this project. But no environmental impact assessment has been completed to evaluate the risk that this project would bring to the economy and ecosystems of this community and the state. As you are well aware, we are in a climate emergency, and the proposed NEXT refinery would be one of the largest Oregon's largest greenhouse gas emitters using large quantities of fracked gas and unsustainable feedstocks to produce so-called renewable diesel fuel. The feedstocks would be brought in by rail from the Midwest, increasing the release of diesel emissions, exacerbating climate disruption, and increasing air and water pollution with the resulting adverse effects on human and ecosystem health. The location for this project is also subject to predicted level-nine seismic activity on stable soils and tenuous dikes. Spills and releases of toxic materials into the waters of the area would have catastrophic impacts on some of Oregon's most highly-valued agricultural land and the health of the communities that depend on it for food and livelihood. For these reasons, I urge DEQ to give careful consideration to the inadequacies of the department's draft water quality certification under the Clean Water Act for NEXT Renewable Fuels and deny the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, Audrey Leonard, followed by Oregon PSR and Mary Stiles, NEDC. And please state your name for the record when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Audrey Leonard, staff attorney for Columbia Riverkeeper. I want to begin with the legal framework for this permit, the twenty-twenty-three rule for Clean Water Act four oh one certificates finalized in November twenty-twenty-three. Before the twenty-twenty-three rule was the twenty-twenty rule, the Trump rule, which substantially narrowed the scope of review. This is no longer the case. Under the twenty-twenty-three rule, DEQ must consider all aspects of the permitted activity, including construction and operation. DEQ's draft permit fails to even scratch the surface of water quality impacts from NEXT's construction and operation. A biological assessment prepared by NEXT consultant in March twenty-twenty-three finds that construction of the facility will adversely affect sensitive fish habitat and is at likely to adversely affect thirteen species of salmon and steelhead. The draft does nothing to address these impacts. Nor does the draft permit contain any specific conditions that will bring the proposed refinery close to acceptable water quality impacts. The boilerplate language in the draft permit suggests that DEQ was unwilling to listen to major valid concerns about the complicated hydrology of a flood-prone area that has been delicately managed through dikes and levees for years. This is a vibrant agricultural community that does not deserve to be shut out yet again in favor of an out-of-state corporation with a history of misleading regulators. Forthcoming stormwater permits for the facility are not appropriate backstops for this massive proposal. Indeed, the stormwater control system is not even designed to prohibit industrial discharges to the full extent possible. So it cannot be relied upon as a mechanism for stormwater compliance. Nor can DEQ pass the buck to the Army Corps because DEQ chose to move forward with the four oh one before seeing a draft environmental impact statement. The four oh one certification is DEQ's pinnacle opportunity to use its full authority to protect the Columbia River, salmon, and vibrant farmland from what would otherwise be one of Oregon's biggest polluters. The only productive option is to deny the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Oregon PSR, followed by Mary Stiles, followed by Sean Clark. If you'll please state your name for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Samantha Hernandez, and I am the Healthy Climate Program Director of Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility. We are an organization of over two thousand professionals and public health advocates from across the state working to address the gravest threats to health and survival. And we are testifying today to oppose NEXT Renewables' water quality certification. Approval of this water quality certification would have devastating impacts on human health and environmental health. Pollution from the facility would harm fish habitat and pollute the water that so many communities depend on for sustenance and recreation, including local agricultural, religious, and fishing communities region-wide. Most importantly, NEXT Renewables' proposed operations violate the Clean Water Act, specifically the narrative water quality standards and anti-degradation rules. Uh, even just as disturbing is the fact that NEXT acknowledges this harm in its own biological assessment. NEXT admits that it would discharge pollution into Oregon's waters in its stormwater plan. NEXT admits that its stormwater plans may not be workable. NEXT admits that DEQ's requirement for barriers to prevent stormwater from impacting facilities may not work. The company also makes little effort to provide realistic information about routine impacts, major spill impacts, or worst-case scenarios event uh in a seismic event. And this is particularly concerning considering the fact that the area is at extreme risk and prone to violent shaking in an earthquake, which is not ideal for storing, refining, and shipping toxic flammable fuel. Now, who bears the brunt of these consequences nearby in downstream communities and wildlife who will be exposed to the release of diesel, fracked gas, toxic chemicals, or aviation fuel in the event of an accident? Oregon PSR strongly urges you to deny Nexus Water Quality Certification and to listen to community members and their concerns before making any decision. Some concerns are inadequate and inconsistent stormwater management plans, incomplete study of impacts, harm to the ability of local residents to manage their own water, and worsening flood risk, just to name a few. Their concerns clearly show that the product should be in time and attention.
Thank you. All right, Mary Stiles, followed by Sean Clark, followed by Teresa McGregor.
Hey, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, good evening. My name is Mary Stites, that's S T I T E S. And I'm the staff attorney at the Northwest Environmental Defense Center. I'm here uh not tonight, not only to elevate the environmental and public health concerns articulated by my colleagues and other concerned Oregonians, but to express and point out the legal shortcomings of this draft certification. Despite recent chaos and uncertainty surrounding the four oh one rules, it is clear that the twenty-twenty-three four oh one rules apply, and this draft fails to meet the requisite federal and state requirements. In twenty-twenty, the Trump administration drastically narrowed the scope of these certifications, limiting jurisdiction only to point source discharges that must comply with, quote, "water quality requirements." This language was a significant departure from the original rules and substantially narrowed DEQ's authority and scope of coverage at the detriment of waterways, beneficial uses, and public health nationwide. But these rules were challenged in federal court, and for about two years, the legal status of the Trump rules uh remained largely largely a mystery to even the most sophisticated regular regulators and litigators. Fortunately, however, the Biden administration enacted the twenty-twenty-three Clean Water Act section four oh one rule, which largely restored the regulations to their pre-twenty-twenty language, including the codification of the expansive scope for which the certification requires. Now pursuant to forty CFR one twenty-one point three, the scope of the certification shall be reviewed and conditioned to assure the activity's construction and operation will comply with water quality standards. This means that the certification is not limited to a direct point source discharge of fill from the end of the pipe, as Trump would have wanted. This expansive interpretation to cover both construction and operation is supported by the express language of four oh one, section four oh one, as well as Supreme Court case law, basic notions of strong public policy, and once again, Title Forty regulations. Regretfully, the NEXT four oh one certification takes a limited view that would only, if even, pass muster under the Trump regulations. However, that the Trump regulations are not in effect anymore. Um, I'll defer my technical discussion of deficiencies um to highlight what others have articulated. But I will say that the tension between the facility's proposed operations and the mandates of the Clean Water Act beg the question of whether the, quote, "operation" of the facility, like NEXT, can comply with water quality standards even under the most stringent of a four oh one certification, which we certainly do not have here. That is both because of the inherent nature of the pollutant loads produced by this activity, but also due to the proposed placement, and that is one that is on the banks of a salmon-bearing flood-prone clone three oh three D-listed waterway. I remind everyone that there is also an economic cost to contaminated water beyond what has been discussed today. As such, NEDC respectfully urges DEQ to reject this permit application, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Sean Clark, followed by Tracy McGregor, followed by Jan Zuckerman. Sean, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Sean Clark. I'm the executive director here at the Port of Columbia County. Oregon revised statute seven 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 specifically identifies the development of the Port of Columbia County's Port Westward Deep Water Facility as a state economic goal of high priority. As the port is charged with the mission of fostering economic development, past port commissions and Columbia County Boards of Commissions have invested over eighteen million dollars in developing infrastructure at the Port Westward Industrial Park, building out the water intake and discharge systems, making rail improvements, and upgrading the roads from the city of Klatskina to the industrial park. With the deep-water dock structure serving the site, the port has an incredibly unique asset adjacent to land, which is already developed and primed for additional development. Failure to utilize these infrastructure investments would be irresponsible. Failure to utilize these infrastructure investments would be irresponsible, particularly when we have a tenant that will produce a product instrumental in achieving our state and federal climate goals, will create more than 240 full-time jobs and contribute more than sixteen million dollars in local tax revenue to support vital county services. The Next Renewable Fuels Facility will capture and control stormwater and process water at the site. The majority of the site will funnel rainwater and the limited process water to an onsite pretreatment system prior to discharge to the port's wastewater system. Rainwater on the driveway and onsite railroad tracks meet the design required by DEQ and will be subject to monitoring and ongoing DEQ oversight. This all aligns with DEQ's water quality regulations and with the Federal Clean Water Act. The Port of Columbia County urges DEQ to approve the water quality permit for Next Renewable Fuels. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Tracy McGregor, followed by Jan Zuckerman, followed by Lauren Bulling. And please state your name for the record. Tracy, do you need any help unmuting?
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I have my husband here too, who would also like to speak, and we're on the same phone.
Okay, I just need to keep you to the two minutes, though.
That's fine. Okay. I'm speaking for my neighbor Warren Sealy, who is president of the Beaver Drainage Improvement Company and my neighbor. BDIC has absolute authority over any and all waterways within its boundaries, including the project footprint. BDIC has not approved any modification to its infrastructure and must be consulted with any and all designs. BDIC is a local government agency as defined by statute. There will be impacts to the rest of the BDIC waterways through the mitigation project, and mitigation is against the BDIC bylaws and articles of incorporation, and the BDIC cannot legally approve such a project with all the impacts to water quality and human safety. BDIC levy system is not certified by FEMA and will not protect against the 100-year flood per FEMA report in 2012. Lands proposed for the project are within the floodway and thus DEQ has not performed necessary work. The BDIC levy system also has not been seismically analyzed, but due to its construction materials likely would not survive seismic activity, DEQ cannot approve the water quality permit until the levy is certified by FEMA and geotechnical investigations show how the levy is seismically sound. The draft permit requires notification of state agencies for spills, but must also require notification of BDIC. Finally, stormwater runoff is to be held in ponds likely resulting in groundwater contamination of BDIC. Next acknowledges that discharges will impact fish habitat. Contamination of BDIC will also contaminate food crops grown within the BDIC resulting in health and safety concerns. BDIC already weighed in extensively regarding the local land use decision that is supposed to underpin this DEQ decision. The issues raised by the BDIC remain unresolved, such as the establishment of large ponds could cause changes in water conditions vital to areas just north of the proposed project. Finally, the 2001 study seems to suggest that infiltration of stormwater, which is proposed with the unlined ponds, will be ineffective. This could lead to significant negative impacts if water levels are altered as a result of the development for nearby agriculture. BDIC's experience strongly suggests that the water levels will be impacted. At best, the application is premature without more study of the site conditions and opportunity for BDIC to review final plans. Establishing new large bodies of water is a drastic change to the BDIC system and must be approved by the BDIC. The BDIC reserves the right to alter any designs and required changes to minimize impacts of the BDI system. Changes will require BDIC sign-off and possibly two-thirds majority landowner vote to ratify. None of these issues should be new or surprising to DEQ, yet the permit leaves them totally unresolved and places the community at risk. This is totally unacceptable. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tracy. If you guys want to get back in line for your husband, we'd be able to do that. Thank you. I'm going to go to Jan Zuckerman, followed by Lauren Bulling, followed by Mike Bridges. Jan, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jan Zuckerman, J-A-N-Z-U-C-K-E-R-M-A-N. I strongly urge you to deny the Clean Water Act 401 permit for the refinery and rail yard at Port Westward. Next proposal will harm fish habitat and kill fish and pollute water that local farmers depend on to grow food. Next acknowledges this harm and therefore does not comply with the Clean Water Act. Why in the world would we want to increase the storage of large quantities of diesel, frac gas, toxic chemical, and aviation fuel in a sensitive wetland, floodplain, earthquake, and liquefaction zone on unstable soil when recent studies in our state have highlighted the dangers in doing so? This site is clearly not suited for a refinery, rail yard, and fuel storage area. In light of the state of the climate and the imminent earthquake, shouldn't we be decommissioning tanks, not building large polluting refineries? It is up to DEQ to ensure that pollution does not enter waterways and must be protective of beneficial uses, including fish. Permitting Next not only contradicts us but ignores the concerns of local communities and endangers our water, which endangers us all. Next is not good for Oregon, the region, or the planet. Please do your due diligence, DEQ, and deny the Clean Water Act 401 permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Lauren Bulling, followed by Mike Bridges, followed by Ron Mathis with Local 36. And please go ahead and state your name.
Yes, my name is Lauren Bulling, L-O-R-N-E-Bulling, B-U-L-L-I-N-G, and I'm the political director for the Ironworkers Local 29. The Ironworkers Local 29 would like to express our strong support for approval of the Next Energy Water Permits. Local 29 represents more than 1,300 journey-level workers and 250 registered apprentices across Oregon and Southwest Washington. We are proud of our partnerships with community groups and the fact that more than 30% of our apprentices are people of color, women, veterans, members of historically disadvantaged communities, or some combination of these groups. Next will create more than 3,500 green energy jobs during construction and an additional 240 during operation. These construction jobs will help bring in new registered apprentices and allow them to advance through the program while allowing journey workers to continue their careers in the skilled trades, ensuring that we have the skilled and local workforce we need for future green energies projects. Next will serve as a hub for sustainable fuels and help protect public health and meet our state's clean energy and air goals. I'll skip over what others have said, but at this time, we ask that DEQ approve the permit for Next so we can start building towards a cleaner future. On a personal note as well, I would just like to say, as a lifelong Oregonian and someone who was born and raised here and under 35, I have a lot at stake for the future of this planet. I really hope that we can start building for a clean energy future and perpetually blocking clean energy projects and not doing anything in our power to fix the crisis generations before have created for mine dooms my generation in regards to both climate change and jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if we can go to Mike Bridges, followed by Ron Mathis, followed by Jane Alt. Mike, if you please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mike Bridges, M-I-K-E-B-R-I-D-G-E-S, and I'm the current president of the Longview Kelso Building and Construction Trades Council, representing thousands of members in the building trades in Southwest Washington. I'm also a business representative for IBW 48 that covers Columbia County. Before my time as a representative for IBW in the building trades, I have been able to work on several amazing projects at the Port Westward location as a journeyman electrician. The building trades, along with its affiliates, unions, and members have been involved in supporting this project through the permitting process. We understand and appreciate the need for a comprehensive and rigorous permitting process because we live, work, and recreate in the Columbia River Basin and estuary and, like everyone else, want to preserve and protect our environment. We also believe that this project has taken the necessary steps to meet or exceed all regulatory concerns through the process. We continually, we continue to strongly support Next Renewable Fuels because of their diligence to create green energy jobs and an economy that creates opportunity in our region while protecting the local and global environment. Appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight, and we urge you to, of DEQ, to approve this permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Ron Mathis, followed by Janet Alt, followed by Laura Iwanaga.
Good evening and thank you for your time. Ron Mathis, R-O-N, last name M-A-T Diets. First off, I'd like to speak as a lifelong Oregonian, born and raised in Oregon City. I do believe that this project is great for the community, and I think it's great for the whole state. As well, I am also a business manager for a local building trades, heat and frost insulators. We have members that live in that area. This is an opportunity for them to get hours towards their apprenticeship and to build a skilled workforce for projects possibly like this one or other green energy projects down the road. I strongly support this project, not only as myself, as business manager, and the members Local 36. I urge DEQ to grant this permit, and I also feel that they've done their due diligence. They will make the right decision on the facts that are presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Alt, please, followed by Laura, followed by Dreng.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, I'm Janet Alt, J-A-N-E-T-A-U-L-T, and I strongly urge DEQ to deny Next's 401 water quality certification. I spend a good part of the year in Clatscanie at the Buddhist monastery just down the street from Port Westward after living there for six years. I have intimately experienced the benefits the monastery has in the wider community and region for the hundreds of people who visit every year, young people learning ethical living and the amount of suffering eased in these times of increasing anxiety. And if this project goes through, I do not know how the place could survive here. Please take the time to adequately assess the safety risks and impacts to the surrounding area and give the vibrant community living in this sacrifice zone the chance to be considered fully. Top experts in their fields have warned us of the very real possibility of a magnitude-nine earthquake in this area, and we all need to take a deep breath and let that really sink in. The simple fact alone that this refinery would be built on a liquefaction zone should disqualify this project, period. The short-sightedness of greenwashed proposals flimsily covering true environmental disaster are the last thing we need right now. I heard DEQ say that they do not have the authority to make decisions based on seismic readiness, but how can something that would alter the environment so drastically not be considered more holistically? A spill would be catastrophic for groundwater, the river, fish, and everyone who lives here and all up and down the Columbia. We're just asking DEQ to not rush to judgment. The community around Port Westward has crucial expertise in managing the groundwater and irrigation systems, which have been left as unresolved problems in Next's plans. Please let the Army Corps of Engineers conduct an EIS before deciding so you have as much information as possible about how this will truly impact the region. For other major projects like Bradwood LNG or Jordan Cove, you have waited to see an EIS before making a judgment. Why be inconsistent in approach here? Further, groundwater levels are too high for the project to function as planned, and Next itself says DEQ's backup plan of putting a liner underneath facilities will not work. Next is hoping for vagueness in the permit to be pushed through, but we urge you to follow your own rules and clearly assess the major risks. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Laura Iwanaga, followed by Dreng, followed by Mark Culp.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, this is Laura Iwanaga. I represent Third Act Oregon, a group of elder Oregonians, representing about thousands, thousands of Oregonians concerned about climate risk and climate crisis. This is not a climate-friendly solution, as was stated earlier by the young man. We at Third Act Oregon strongly ask DEQ to deny this project. The Next proposal would harm fish habitat, likely killing fish, all while polluting water that is vital to the local agricultural, religious, and fishing communities regionwide. This violates the Clean Water Act, violating both narrative water quality standards and anti-degradation rules. Next acknowledges this harm in its own biological assessment. Routine pollution at the facility would harm water quality and essential fish habitat. An establishment of the project would disrupt local water systems for the community. Next does not provide realistic information about routine impacts, major spill impacts, or worst-case scenarios in a seismic event. A thorough environmental impact statement would show the same risk and guaranteed water pollution. DEQ is rushing its decision without having seen even the raft of the environmental impact statement from the Army Corps of Engineers. Why? Again, I urge denial of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dreng, followed by Mark Culp, followed by 3-R-E-C-O-S. Dreng, please go ahead.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jen Espon, D-R-E-N-G-E-S-P-E-L-I-N. And I was commenting in full support of the approval of the water permit. I am a 46-year resident of Columbia County. I've worked on a couple of projects at Port Westward. They have been a game changer for myself, for the community, and I just would urge you to please pass the permit approval. This is a game changer for people who are county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Culp, you're next.
Yes, my name's Mark Culp, M-A-R-K-C-U-L-P, born and raised in Oregon, and I just wanted to say that I fully support the 401 permit, and I hope DEQ grants it. I'm an apprentice for Local 36, heat and frost insulators. I felt like the impact that it would have on jobs in the community would be greatly beneficial, and I just wanted to come on tonight to show my support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person is 3-R-E-C-O-S, followed by Tom Gordon, followed by a phone number that ends 3059. Please go ahead and state your name.
Hi, my name is William Turnipseed.
Is that really your picture?
I'm a local resident here in the Port Westward area. Yeah, I have two main concerns with this project and the scope of the 404 water quality permit. The first one is the Next, in Next's own biological assessment, they said salmon and other fish could be negatively affected from stormwater contaminants. It seems that the DEQ and the Clean Water Act should be protecting these fish based on their own rules. The next one, I am concerned that the dikes are too unstable for large construction equipment during the building of this facility. Seems that this would cause damage to the waterways in the event of, yeah, damaged dikes during the construction via toxic construction materials being unleashed into the environment, thus violating the Clean Water Act. I got a little time, so I'll throw in a third one. I am concerned as well about the release of toxins due to a seismic event that would pollute the irrigation waters for the local farmers in the area, not to mention the salmon and the other fish downstream. I end with saying that the permit should be denied because of the dangers to our waterways and in violation of the Clean Water Act. Blessings to everybody who came here tonight to comment, and extra blessings to all the people who put this on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person is Tom Gordon, and followed by the phone number 3059, followed by Wendy Schmidt. Go ahead, Tom. Please state your name.
My name is Tom Gordon, T-O-M-G-O-R-D-O-N. The draft water quality certification should not be granted. The peat soil on the posed site would shake severely during an expected Cascadia earthquake, which will occur at some point in the future according to the dugami. The rating for the expected shaking is, quote, "violent," unquote, the highest possible. Even our frequent weaker earthquakes will shake the soil and dikes, causing potentially substantial damage. Dikes in Portland, the western area, are the most subtle dikes in the lower Columbia River system and are not up to specifications. The definition of a subtle dike is that it has decreased in height by 10% or more of designed fill height. This means the dikes are unstable and more likely to breach or collapse during an earthquake or floods. Next admits that further studies are necessary to determine how much weight the road and levee can withstand. Also, rail lines come in with feedstock. Large tanks would be holding biodiesel and a proposed hydrogen-producing plant would be on site. Large tanks, large tanks would be holding biodiesel and a proposed hydrogen producing plant would be on site. A release of this biodiesel and industrial wreckage into the Columbia River would be fatal for salmon coming upstream and in the estuary, which is salmon nursery. Weak dikes could not and would not contain the fuel and wreckage. The Army Corps of Engineers has not finished their EIS for this project either. Why approve this certification when this has not been done? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're gonna move on to phone number three zero five nine, if you could please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Linda Horst, L I N D A H O R S T. I live in Kelso, Washington, part of the lower Columbia River communities. Located downwind from emissions from the present and proposed industries at Port Westward Industrial Park. Despite twice denying Next's four oh one water quality certification. Appallingly, DEQ is now proposing to approve it. The following comments are a few of the myriad reasons why Next's project does not comply with the Clean Air, Clean Water Act and must be denied. One, Next's biological assessment and post-construction stormwater management plan both state this project's toxic stormwater pollution would harm fish and essential fish habitat. This impact alone would disqualify this project for meeting Oregon's rules under the CWA protecting beneficial uses. Quote, DEQ must be protective of beneficial uses, including fish, unquote. Two, this project is not in the public interest and would harm our river and communities. It is one of the largest, most environmentally harmful private projects ever proposed in Oregon. Threatening fish, clean water, local farms, recreation, and wildlife. Additionally, the Next project would conflict with Oregon's effort to transition away from storing liquid, flammable, toxic fuel on unstable soil where it can impact the Columbia River estuary. Furthermore, the project would also increase pollution emissions, which would make Next one of Oregon's largest dementors. Climate change of climate change pollution over one million tons by using unsustainable feedstocks and frac gas. Three, concerning designated uses of Oregon's water, quote, DEQ must ensure that pollution does not enter the waterways, unquote. However, Next admits that the project would discharge polluted waters in both sloughs, the Columbia River groundwater and surface waters at Port Westward. Even though Next is one of the most polluting proposals Oregon has ever reviewed. DEQ still proposes to authorize the plan based on inadequate information and in the absence of an EIS. Is that it?
Yeah, I have to ask you to run them. Sorry, you have two minutes.
Oh, okay. Pardon? Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next, next commenter is Wendy Schmidt, followed by BS, followed by Jay Lucas. Wendy, please go ahead and state your name for the record.
I'm Hopey Networked.
You did.
My name is Wendy Schmidt, W E N D Y S C H M I D T. I am a part of the Beaver Drainage District. I am about a quarter mile away from the facility. The mitigation would parallel my land. Um, and I just have a little story for you. I have twenty-five acres within the BDIC and my neighbor this past spring installed um, a culvert to access his crops on the other side of the slough. Uh, the water level within forty-eight hours dropped four feet and it still has not returned back to the normal level. During that time, my neighbor's having a hard time containing his cattle and I lost sheep due to the muck that they thought that they could get across. Now, my question is, they, as in the Next facility, just in the assembling of this project, want to pile drive fifteen thousand pylons ninety feet deep into liquefaction that is known to be over two hundred feet deep in some spots. I'm wondering what that alone would do, you know, based on my itty bitty culvert problem. Um, the other thing that I wanted to highlight is that green is not green. Uh, the idea of green fuel and the products that Next wants to, wants to produce is naphtha, kerosene, and biodiesel, among other products. All of these products are synthetic. The biodiesel combines diesel petroleum with biofuel. But all of these synthetic created chemicals that create this fuel are toxic, forever toxic to aquatic life. Aviation fuel is synthetic kerosene. There is no going back once it spills into that water. The salmon won't have a chance for a very, very, very long time. So perhaps, um, there has to be a choice. Do you want to have this facility and the toxic wasteland that it's going to create? Or would you like to have sustainable farmland, recreation land, um, salmon for the future, just a better place for our children to exist? Thank you.
Thank you. BS, followed by Jay Lucas, followed by Tony Hyde. BS, if you please state your name for the record.
Hey, can you hear me?
I can.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, oh, that's crazy, because I keep coming to these things. I feel like nobody can hear me. Uh, hey, so jobs, 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 uh, unions, economy. You know, I trust the agencies, um, and, you know, Next designed this gorgeous website. It's green, it's green. And all of these totally make-believe documents. And unfortunately, you know, these NIMBYs, they're bad and they're everywhere. And, uh, you know, I wish I was getting paid to be here, but actually, uh, somebody pressured me uh, to say all of this. So, you know, forget the applicable criteria and hey, let's do this. I haven't done any of my homework, but I am certainly using big words to make you all think I have. Uh, so hey, here's some homework. Uh, just want to remind everybody, the federal government is a registered corporation in the state of Delaware. And all, I mean all, public agencies who claim that they represent the good of the people are actually individually liable for doing harm to the people that they're claiming they represent. So anyways, I, you know, I just, I wanted to really reiterate the jobs and the economy and the unions and, uh, to trust the agencies. Um, and hey, I just, everybody should go look at Next's really pretty green website. Thank you for your time so much.
Can you restate your name for the record?
I am. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Jay Lucas, followed by Tony Hyde, followed by Haley Watson. Jay Lucas, can you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Joshua Lucas. I am representative of the Western States Carpenter's Union. Uh, formerly known as the Northwest Carpenter's Union, uh, as it was spoken earlier. Um, we are, we, we would like to, uh, reiterate, uh, what Mike Bridges had said earlier. Uh, we are in, in strong support of uh, this project. Uh, not only will Next be bringing thirty-five hundred, uh, thirty-five hundred union jobs, uh, to the community. But it will also help expand our apprenticeships, uh, out here. Um, and I just wanted to, I just want to reiterate that we do strongly support this project. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Wendy Hyde, followed by Haley Watson, followed by Kate Murphy. And if you'll say your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tony Hyde, T O N Y H Y D E. I'm chairman of the board of the Columbia Economic Team. Our membership represents every municipality in the county, along with the county, the port district, private industry, and multiple nonprofit organizations. On behalf of the Columbia Economic Team, I'm testifying to express our complete support for Next Renewable Fuels four oh one water quality certification. And we urge the Department of Environmental Quality to approve this application. The technical design, existing and planned infrastructure, monitoring programs, spill prevention and response, and mitigation all clearly demonstrate that Next can construct and operate the proposed clean fuels facility according to strict state and federal water quality standards. Next Renewable Fuels meets the rigorous regulations for water permit, therefore, according to state statutes, rules and guidelines of permit should be approved. Next Clean Fuels Facility will capture and control stormwater and process water at the site. The majority of their site will be funnel rainwater and limited process water to an onsite pretreatment system prior to discharge to the port's existing permitted wastewater system. Rainwater, the driveway, and outside railroad tracks meeting design required by DEQ will be subject to monitoring and ongoing DEQ oversight. This all aligns with DEQ's water quality regulation and the Federal Clean Water Act. Further, Next has already received approval from the Oregon Department of State Lands Removal Field Permit, which includes enhanced restoration of the four hundred and seventy-six acre wetland within the Beaver Drainage District. This mitigation site will further enhance the overall groundwater quality within the region and contribute to the natural occurring flood mitigation groundwater system. Our organization is responsible for economic development in all Columbia County. Economic development is not just jobs at any cost or even jobs for jobs. Responsible economic development is about encouraging investment by businesses that are environmentally responsible, sustainable, and beneficial. Protect our communities and also provide jobs and economic stimulus. Next's job is to do just that and to meet relentancy, comply with environmental regulations. The EQ must, must, most important job today is to approve Next Renewables' water permit. By DEQ's own standards and rules, if a facility meets all requirements, DEQ will issue a facility water permit. We firmly believe Next Clean Fuels proposal meets all legal and regulatory requirements. And the permit should be granted without delay. Thank you for your opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Haley Watson, followed by Kate Murphy, followed by Diana Whitner. Diana Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Haley Watson, H A Y L E Y W A T S O N. I am the political and special projects coordinator for the Oregon State Building and Construction Trades Council. We're a statewide umbrella organization comprised of thirty-one member unions and six regional councils. And we represent tens of thousands of highly skilled men and women throughout the state. Our county strongly supports Next Renewable Fuels efforts to build a renewable diesel production facility at the Port of Columbia County's Port Westward site. With more than fifteen thousand local members, including thousands that are living in Columbia County, the Building Trades views this as a win-win opportunity for both the local economy and for the environment. Our affiliate unions are workforce development leaders nationwide, establishing gold standard apprenticeship programs that strive to diversify the construction workforce and provide family sustaining careers. Next provides an opportunity for local graduates who want to pursue a career in the skilled trades to begin an apprenticeship and do impactful work in their own community. The construction of this facility will employ more than thirty-five hundred highly skilled local workers in addition to creating more than two hundred and forty permanent jobs. The Next Renewable Diesel Development will help drive Columbia County toward a healthy and sustainable local economy. We respectfully ask the DEQ to approve the Next Water Quality Certification application without delay. Our local skilled workers, apprentices, and the future apprentices are ready to start building a cleaner future for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kate Murphy, followed by Diana Whitner, followed by Mary Duval. Kate, if you can state your name for the record.
My name is Kate Murphy and I'm a senior community organizer for Columbia Riverkeeper. I have a background in public health with a focus on environmental systems and human health. I'm here tonight to strongly urge the Department of Environmental Quality to deny the four oh one water quality certification for Next Renewables. Time and time again, we've experienced regulatory agencies pass off responsibility for protecting our environment and our communities from the harms of the fuel industry, often referencing the limits of their authority. So often, the scope of analysis gets limited in such a way that it distorts the actual overall harm that may occur. And time and time again, we've seen industry piece together projects one per minute a time without proper scrutiny about the overall harm that the project would cause. We know this project would cause harm to fish habitat, habitats that's critical to fish already struggling to navigate human caused pollution and increased water temperatures in the river. Fish that are vitally important to tribes, to subsistence fishers, to local communities, and for our regional ecology. We know this would increase transport traffic, including marine tankers through sensitive ecosystems in the Columbia River, where it appears there are currently no limits on the amount of traffic that can pass through. We know this project would add significant pollution to an already overburdened airshed. We know this project will destroy irreplaceable farmland. We know that we should be actively working to make things better, not worse. DEQ should not move forward with this permit prior to the Army Corps completing the environmental impact, impact statement. This move is not protective of our communities and our environment, both of which bear the greatest risk of harm from this project. Our communities deserve better. This project is a terrible sloppy idea in a very highly sensitive area. DEQ, you have all the evidence you need should you choose to use it. I challenge you to question the limitations that you feel are inhibiting you from doing the job of truly protecting the environment and the public from harm. Please have the courage to do the right thing for our communities and our environment and use your authority to deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Whitner, followed by Mary Duval, followed by Carol Sweet. Diana, if you can state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Diana Winter, and that is D I A N A W I N T H E R. And I'm here to encourage the Department of Environmental Quality to grant Next Renewable Fuels Oregon the necessary water quality certification for the facility they plan to build at the Port Westward Industrial Park. I'm a proud member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Forty-Eight. Those of us in the building trades are often accused of being against environmental protections and regulations. But in my experience, the building trade unions are some of the strongest advocates for environmentally responsible economic development. And that is exactly what this project is. Next will be producing renewable diesel made from organic waste and sustainable aviation fuel. They have direct, these have drastically lower carbon emissions than the traditional fuels in use today. If we prevent this project from moving forward, we are essentially saying that we prefer the current status quo of standard diesel and aviation fuels and all the higher greenhouse gas emissions that come with them. If we're going to transition to a green economy, we need to focus on improvements we can implement today. Otherwise, we fail our communities and our planet as a whole, because we keep turning our backs on better while holding out for a perfect solution that isn't available yet. And while we hold out, trucks will continue to drive up and down I-5 and planes will continue to fly in and out of PDX. Why wouldn't we want those vehicles to have lower carbon emissions right now while we work to create greener alternatives for the future? We have a chance to build a facility that will contribute to reducing climate change while also providing family wage jobs, wetlands restoration, and major tax revenues that will go to supporting essential services in the community. Please don't pass up this opportunity to be part of the just transition to a more sustainable energy future and grant Next the water quality certification they need in order to keep this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, next speaker is Mary Duval, followed by Carol Sweet, followed by Tracy McGregor, and then Tom Gordon, and that's all we have right now. Please go ahead, Mary.
Hello?
Yes. I can. Can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Mary Duval. I'm a Klatskanai resident of thirty-two years. I was a college professor, uh, mental health therapist, a rape victim advocate, and a former hospice medical social worker. I'm quite familiar with death and dying. I'm here to advocate for intelligent restraint regarding the industrialization of North County, Columbia County, and to argue for the health of the Columbia River. I ask that you deny Next four oh one certification on the basis of the degradation this uh, project would cause. I have made this metaphor that the great Columbia is like an abused, battered, and half-dead woman whose gifts had been stolen by humans to enrich themselves with litter, little, if any regard to the river. Tonight, I've heard arguments for jobs and money and, and in on the one hand, but on the other hand, to oppose the pollution of the river. I'm on the side of the river. We've used the great Columbia for sewage or industrial waste. for toxic runoff of forests and fields. How many supersites are there along her banks? From aluminum plants, from paper mills, from petroleum storage, how many salmon are gone? Never mind the dams that have turned her into a pond when she is a river. It seems to me it's quite like our culture's treatment of women, but I won't go further with that metaphor. I just wonder if any of you have seen the beautiful wetlands that I love to visit and paint the habitats for the powerful hovering kingfisher down by that area where the railroad tracks look unable to hold on to train traffic. It is way past time to end the exploitation of our waters, destruction of salmon habitats, and take up the role of defenders of what remains of the river and all nature. Time to join together citizens and rule makers, politicians, to honor nature and work with her, with her, not chopping her apart over and over again for the temporary enrichment of a few. And when the
Just get a wrap up, please.
Okay, when the, when the, just look at the, the, what happened to Japan when the tsunami hit. If we have that earthquake and a tsunami, we'll, we'll be full of sewage and volatile fluids in the river and it will be awful. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Sweet, followed by Tracy McGregor, followed by Tom Gordon, and then Michael Mintz. Carol Sweet, please state your name for the record.
Carol Sweet, C A R R O L L S W E E T. I'm the chair of Comision Columbia County. It's a citizen organization formed many years ago to address the oil trains that were coming through our county. Will not a lot of regulation. We were very entranced with with next initially. It had a different name, but when they first came in, the first thing they said to us was no trains, no trains ever. And we were thrilled. And now they have an okay for four hundred cars on their site at Port Westward. And the reason they gave us is that what if the river stops working? And that's what we're worried about is the river stopping working. And it just feels to me and to us as citizens that it is violating the future on false promises. I urge you to not listen to everything they say next. Go look at the last place that they did this to and see what, what you think then. And our obligation as citizens is to protect the river, to protect the environment. And using the fact that it's supposedly going to be renewable diesel, which is only has, they say now five year maybe possibility is not really protecting anything. So I urge you to deny this permit. And let's move forward in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Tracy McGregor, Tom Gordon, and Michael Mintz. Tracy McGregor, please. Well, the second speaker on your line, please state their name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, this is Tracy's phone, but it's Scott McGregor who's speaking. S C O T T M A C G R E G O R. I live within a few miles of the proposed next facility. I have a small farm and try to raise as much of our, of our own food as possible in a sustainable manner. Next is not sustainable. The product next proposes to make is indistinguishable from diesel made from petroleum, according to their own information. Diesel is known to be destroying our atmosphere. In the war against our atmosphere, it is the ammunition. The global cost of next diesel may never be accurately assessed. The local cost to the ecology of these wetlands, to the fish habitat, the risk of catastrophe and so on, you have heard from other testimony tonight. There are sustainable land use alternatives, agriculture, for example. To destroy farmland in order to build an operation that will destroy our atmosphere is a step backward. Every step backward makes the journey longer. And I have a minute left. I'd like to write iterate that the Beaver Drainage Improvement Company, which is responsible for the, this lowland behind the dikes here, has not approved any modification to the infrastructure that has been proposed from next and must be consulted with any and all designs. The Beaver Drainage Improvement District is a local government agency as defined by statute. And the DEQ has not been cooperating, as far as we can tell, with any of the requests and concerns of the BDIC. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Gordon, and then we'll end with Michael Mintz.
Hi, this is Diana Gordon, D I A N A G O R D O N. We all know the importance of the Columbia River estuary for salmon and steelhead recovery. One important component of estuary health is the adjacent wetlands. We know we must protect them and let them do their important work of filtering the water that reaches the river. The next proposal includes a plan to fill a hundred forty acres and mitigate the loss. However, there's a very real response, possibility that this company will not get it right. They've never built a refinery before, and this one is in sensitive wetlands. I do not think we should trust an untested company to get all this correct the first time. According to the Journal of Geophysical Research, the Columbia River Estuary has lost about seventy percent of its tidal wetlands along the Columbia since the late eighteen hundreds. Wetlands are under siege for all over the country from construction and industry. Yet their importance from water filtration to slowing down wildfires, to providing valuable habitat, to recreation cannot be minimized. BDIC has managed this area of wetland successfully for many years. They make sure nearby farmers have adequate water when they need it and drain it off when they don't. This is a valuable and successful service for a valuable and successful farming area. The water stays clean and useful for salmon and people. Outsiders will never be as successful as BDIC. I think you should deny this four oh one permit and free up the port to find a viable and dependent business, dependable business to take its place. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Michael Mintz, followed by Bonnie McLei, McKinley, excuse me. Michael, please go ahead. State your name for the record. Michael Mintz, can you unmute and state your name for the record, please?
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, my name is Michael Mintz. My last name is spelled M I N T Z. I want to thank you for this forum and for giving us all a chance to air our concerns and support for this project. You know, I have a BS in environmental science. I'm, I'm no expert at, at this particular facility. I haven't been following it real closely. But I do have a, a degree in environmental science and I've been writing reports for, to, that go to the DEQ for, for a decade now. And I have a pretty good idea how the DEQ works and how it doesn't work, actually. And I think that in, in my experience, as an agency, things can get pretty myopic. And you know, I, it, it's beyond my comprehension that you could ignore the concerns of the Beaver drainage district. I mean, I just don't even understand how that could work or how you could approve this before there is an EIS from the Army Corps of Engineers. And, you know, the, the whole idea that, you know, you could, you could put a, I forget what they call it, a filter, a damper, and then, you know, beneath the soil and then even the next corporation says that that isn't going to work. I, I mean, it just doesn't feel like, you know, you throw out the numbers, oh, and it's, it's good with four oh one this and three okay that. And it, it just doesn't add up to me. And I would really encourage you to look carefully at the people that have been living and farming there. And then the whole idea that, oh, this is going to be good for the economy and this is going to be good for the schools. And the other thing, the last thing that I would like to say is that this whole thing about renewable fuels being so great. You know, if you really look at it, the renewable fuels are not what they are cracked up to be, quite honestly. And the environmental impact of these is, is, is really great. So I, I would really encourage you to take this a little more slowly and look more carefully at the people who actually live here and not just depend on data and information that next corporation is, is throwing down here. So thank you for your time and thank you for listening to us all.
Thank you. Okay, last speaker tonight will be Bonnie McKinley. Bonnie, if you could state your name for the record. Go ahead, Bonnie. Please state your name for the record, please. Bonnie, I'm afraid we cannot hear you. Bonnie, I'm afraid we cannot hear you. If you're unable to give oral comment, you're welcome to send in a written comment. And I guess just before I close the public comment period, is there anybody else who would like a chance to speak or has not yet had a chance to do so? You can raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
Mayor Bob, I saw your hand briefly go up and then down. Were you wanting to provide a comment? If you are, please say so in the chat. Or I'm allowing you to unmute yourself if you're wanting to speak and provide a comment.
Yes. Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. It's Robert Price, R O B E R T, R M B R A J C I C H. I am the mayor of City of Claskonai. As you all know, Claskonai is the closest Columbia County city next to the port. We have seven counselors that represent the people of Claskonai. I am speaking on behalf of the council tonight in giving full support in next energies project. For the last three and a half, four years, five, I don't know how long it's been. Our council has attended all port, county, and the DEQ and other regulatory meetings and public forum. We have had our own public workshop where we invited next energy to speak and we took in an hour and a half of public comment. So we are very versed on next energy. Claskonai is in need of economic growth. In nineteen sixty-five, they made, we bought, the county bought Port Westward, and that is for economic growth. We have waited a long time. And we believe our time has come. So I give full support from the county and the people of Claskonai for the next energy project. We hope you approve their water quality permits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then I try to call on Bonnie McKinley again. Bonnie, are you able to speak? It does look like you're unmuted, but I'm sorry, I cannot hear you. All right. If there's no further people in the queue to speak this evening, I'm going to close the oral portion of the comments tonight. And yes, you'd be Bonnie and anybody else would be welcome still to put their comments in the Q and A if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I'm going to enter questions in the Q and A. But yeah, no worries.
Questions in the QA. All right. So we'll have, we'll, we'll definitely accept written comment though, through the other, through the other channels. All right. So seeing that we don't have anyone else raising their hand to speak at this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. And it is now eight forty-four PM, and I'm closing this public hearing. Handing it back to you, Michael.
And thank you very much Tiffany for facilitating the public hearing. I really appreciate that and your moderation. And I also wanted to thank everybody for your participation and input and your questions. So we're going to wrap up the meeting here and to close it out and provide some reminders for the public comment period. I'm going to invite Christine Zvetkovich, our Northwest Region Administrator, to come back and close us out for tonight. Thank you.
All right, everyone. Thank you again for attending this virtual public hearing on the draft four oh one water quality certification for next renewable fuels. As we noted, DEQ will consider all comments that we've received tonight and that are submitted through, during the public comment period. And we may revise the draft certification based on the comments we've received. As a reminder, the public comment period ends on Friday, October twenty-fifth at five PM. Hope you each have a great rest of your evening.